Pastor Higgins, when you come up and give us our prayer, and it's gonna be followed by a pledge by Councilman Crum.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come out of no shape, form, or fashion. We come with submissive hearts and reluctant minds. But Father God, we approach you out of grace, asking you to forgive us for all our sins, our past sin, present, and future. Now, Father God, we come leaning and depending on unity and grace. We come approaching peace that you have in your hand. We ask you to put your loving arms of protection around our city, our schools, our homes, every business, every street. Father God, we ask you right now to move like you've never moved before, but like only you can. Father God, every bereaved family in this city, give them hope. Every one that is sick among us, the senior citizens, as well as the babies. Father God, we thank you because you are God, and beside you there is no other. You have brought us this far, and we know that you won't leave us now. Teach us how to love one another. Lord, as we have our differences, we still belong to you, Father. Father God, we ask you to bless every home, every teacher in this city, every business owner, every young person that gets up every morning and go to school. Father God, bless the teachers right now in the name of Jesus. Bless the parents and grandparents that are still just concerned about their child going to school and making it home. Lord, go on every street corner and remew the drugs and the alcohol that is not of you. Lord, teach us how to put up our guns and be able to have a conversation, Father God. Lord, we ask you to bless our sports and bless our clubs and ministries along the way. Go behind every church doors and let us be able to come out into your streets and to your people, Father God. How can we love God and say we don't love his people? Father God, we ask you to bless this council, give them wisdom and knowledge to continue to lead us, your people. Father God, bless them and their homes and their families, strengthen them right now in the name of Jesus. And Father God, when it's all said and done, we'll be so careful to give you all the praise and all the honor and all the glory. And let this city be upon the rock that you build, that no weapon formed against it shall prosper. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and thank God.
Let us place the flag, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every day and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen, for that pledge of allegiance, and I just really want to thank Pastor Higgins for that prayer. Definitely much needed. Thank you. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you call the row, please?
Mayor McClendon.
President.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior. Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Katz.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday. Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
We have all ten present on today. We had no bid openings. Do we have any corrections to the minutes?
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed? Those minutes are approved. Before we go into the O business, I brought up three things that we need to add. That was the ordinance, O two, about just the gentleman that works for us, just doing the bid, being able to do bids with the city. The condemnation of South 2018 Grove Street.
Permission for the police vehicles.
Yeah, for the police vehicles. Can I get a motion second to approve?
So moved. Fag it.
Any discussion?
Would you be adding him as well? Or you waiting to add that later? Would you be adding the gentleman to speak, or are you gonna add that later?
I can't hear you.
At this time, would you be adding the citizen's request? Are you gonna add that later? Permission to add it to agenda? I didn't know if you were gonna do it now or later.
We can also include the citizen's request.
I was just wondering if we're gonna approve everything at one time.
Also include the citizen's request, request for the council?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed? Okay, so I end it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
O business, City Attorney?
If I may ask, under O business, that we table that indefinitely at this time?
Back in second?
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed? This table? New business? City Attorney?
This is an ordinance to provide a lot-split plat and dedication of property for street extension in the city of West Memphis located within the Taylor-Hemmingway subdivision on North Seventh Street and Interstate Commerce Drive.
All right, City Attorney.
Just keep reading, because we didn't do a motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
I can.
To read O one by Friday.
And O two.
And O two that we added.
On the paper, aye? Opposed? All right, Pastor.
It really wasn't that long. I probably could have done both of them, but thank you. An ordinance to provide a lot-split plat and dedication of property for street extension in the city of West Memphis located within the Taylor-Hemmingway subdivision on North Seventh Street and Interstate Commerce Drive.
Thank you. The motion and second, suspend the rules to place on the second reading?
So moved.
On the paper, aye? Opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance to provide a lot-split plat and dedication of property for street extension in the city of West Memphis located within the Taylor-Hemmingway subdivision on North Seventh Street and Interstate Commerce Drive.
Now, Father, suspend the rules for the place on the third reading?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed?
This is the third reading of an ordinance to provide a lot-split plat and dedication of property for street extension in the city of West Memphis located within the Taylor-Hemmingway subdivision on North Seventh Street and Interstate Commerce Drive.
If I made before, yes, final vote, the amendments.
Okay, great.
Are the corrections?
Yeah.
There were three. One was, two are misspellings of Cretan and fractional, and the other was 3.0 acres should be 3.29 acres.
You put that in motion?
Yes.
Take it a second?
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed? All right.
I got it. I got it.
Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, on the paper, aye? Opposed? Give that ordinance number a number, please.
Ordinance number 2644, 2644.
That ordinance number is 2644. O two, City Attorney?
O two is an ordinance to authorize members of the city council to purchase services from Jarvis Cooper, DBA Cooper Tree Service, and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second, the place on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed?
The second reading of an ordinance to authorize members of the city council to purchase services from Jarvis Cooper, DBA Cooper Tree Service, and for other purposes.
Now, Father, suspend the rules, place on the third reading?
So moved.
Second.
On the paper, aye? Opposed?
This is the third reading of an ordinance to authorize members of the city council to purchase services from Jarvis Cooper, DBA Cooper Tree Service, and for other purposes.
Any ref for the third time? Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
He does a wonderful job.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I'm in violation since he's already cut some of mine down.
On the paper, aye? Opposed? It passes. Will you give that a number?
Ordinance number 2645, 2645.
That number is 2645. I'm gonna go down to permission request. Can I get a motion? Well, can I get a motion and second to approve the condemnation of South 2018 Grove Street?
So moved.
On the paper, aye? Any discussion? Councilman Hutchinson?
No.
Oh, okay. On the paper, aye? Opposed? All right, it passes. Also, we have the five derango vehicles for our police department, roughly, we're gonna say 186 or 210?
214, basically, ballparking there.
214,000, and what we doing? We buying five new vehicles because we got two officers riding in one vehicle, and then we didn't have the vehicle that we ordered earlier this year. It's still coming somewhere, but they come in three months. We need the vehicles. Can I get a motion and second to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Was this, this is something that they had already done, because in our police commission meeting, which I haven't done the report yet, Chief Campbell was expressing the need. He said that there are six cars on order. Are there six or five?
No, we asked, that's different. We ordered.
This is different, so this is something else, and we are needing more.
Actually, they're gonna be the derangos, so they'll be a little smaller than the.
And I know the SRO officers are also using their own personal vehicles.
Exactly, so.
Second, does anybody say first?
On the paper, aye? Opposed? Thank you all. All right, we're gonna go to committee reports. We're gonna start with the police department?
Yes, sir. This is just a brief synopsis of our meeting and not a full-length transcript. The West Memphis Police Commission met Monday, September 11th, at 12:00 noon. The police department is now hiring officers through the $1.7 million grant. Chief Campbell has hired 21 officers under his administration in the past year and a half. There are currently eight officers in the academy. The police department has six cars on order and will need about 10 more during the next budget session. They will ask for those. There are eight officers in the academy, as I said earlier, and he wants to hire about six to nine more. The grant money will be used by July 2024, after which, that money is used, the grant can be reapplied for. The chief and staff are in the process of updating the police policy personnel manual. This is for the police department only, and they do their own manual. Also discussed in the meeting was the need for the police department to buy new radios. It was discussed that the radios that they have are totally obsolete. They're having to get new ones, but they're just gonna be like throwing money away because the new, they're not new, they're gonna be used one, but they've got to get them because they're in such dire need of radios. And they're trying to wait for Dwayne Rose and the new tower that's being built to come to fruition. But I did talk to Dwayne, and he said it's something about the soil, that they've got to redo soil, or something like that, or something is wrong with the soil that they wanted to build the tower on. So there are a few he-cups, he-cups in getting that tower built right now. But until then, the police department are in need of radios, and they've just got to do the best they can with what they can get and with what they have. And we're just hoping that the project with Dwayne Rose come to fruition very soon. Mrs. Mohammed said that she would talk to the budget chair, which I did, Tracy Katz, about radios and how we can factor that into the budget. And I'm sure, as he said, that if they just come and ask, or during the budget hearing, then we may be able to do something. I don't know what else we will be able to do without the A-Win project.
Well, there are currently two towers in Cretan County. Now, the third is, of course, is being built. We very well may be able to go ahead and look at using the new radios as part of the Motorola project and find that that would be an efficient process. It's just the third tower may not be up yet, but we just need to check, make sure they can get the actual response time that they need.
Right, well, it's very, very important that they get that, because as you're saying, the response time, a matter of life and death is involved. So we're just gonna be working as diligently as we can to get them exactly what they need.
Mr. Rose should be able to answer that question. Mr. Rose should be able to answer that question.
Right, well, he said it's something about the soil.
No, I'm not talking about the building of the third tower. I'm talking about the system actually working with the two towers that we currently have.
You think we can use those two towers?
He needs to answer that question, yes.
Okay, then we'll ask him about that. I don't know if anyone.
I will get those answered for you.
You'll get those, because they get them to the police department, because I did give them my word that I would try something about it.
I would definitely, I would give it to Chief, and I don't know what we doing, and get that information, and give it to Dwayne, and make sure.
Will you get that with me?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you so much. Also, there were many things discussed surrounding the radios and the need for the police cars, hiring of officers, and not having enough equipment to go around, not having enough radios to give to each officer. So we need all of these things done, and of course, we're all supporting our police department. And we're gonna work diligently, as diligently as we possibly can, to get them everything that they need so they can be out there putting their lives in danger, but having everything they need to try to counteract crime as best as they possibly can. Also, Commissioner Willis-Mundy expressed the concern about traffic signs at the new Wonder Junior High School building, in which it is really, really terrible in the morning time, not just Wonder Junior, but since it's on Broadway, I guess it poses an even greater threat, because it's right there on that main thoroughfare. So it, there was a bad accident there a few mornings ago. But I worked for the school district for almost 30 years, and I've not seen any resolve for traffic flow in the morning and evenings at any school. But here at the junior high, since it's right there on Broadway, I think Mr. Monday, if he wants to express what his concerns were on that, you're free to do that now.
Yes, I will. I noticed that the police have, are sitting there now with the lights on. They went red on and did what we asked them to do. They got officers out there now, and it's gonna help slow the traffic down in the area, protect our children. That's what it's all about.
And I noticed that the very next morning as well, this is the purpose of having these commission meetings and having our department heads and police, everybody there, so we can get questions asked and answers and get things resolved. So asking that question, Commissioner Monday was most certainly important, and it did bring forth results, because they were out there that very next morning. I saw it myself, because I have to go that way to get to work. And thank you so much for that.
I do have a question, too. Polk, is there supposed to be, I thought there was gonna be sidewalks coming up, Polk? I know they have them coming down 25th, but at one time, I thought we had talked about sidewalks from, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. From 25th to 21st Street, that's an MPO project. Okay. Still working on, but actually, I kinda got some news from something on 25th, I wanna tell you all to look at it.
Right, right, and I'm very thankful for the sidewalks we have in front of Wonder, Jackson, Wonder Elementary School. It makes everything so much a smoother process for the children coming to and from school, traveling to and from school. There were quite a few things we discussed in our police commission meeting, but I think the eight officers that are in the academy, the need for new police cars, the need for the radios, talking to Wayne, and also Commissioner Counselor Katz. We talked about monies that we think that, not we think, let me rephrase that. I don't wanna get thrown under the bus. Talking about monies that should be going into the police department funds, but going into the general fund. How do the police department take that out if they need to purchase something?
All funds go to the general funds. All reimbursements, everything.
And I just wanna answer that question by saying that the one thing, and I'm gonna talk with the chief, because certain things I don't think that need to be discussed, because it's not their money in the first place. General fund is paid by you all, the council, and it's certain things they don't supposed to. I would deal with that part.
I think it's, I don't think it was any, they were dating question or anything to cause any kind of confusion. I believe it's because we have a new chief, and he's learning and wanting to know. And he was not the one who really asked the question. We were talking about the Southland and monies that are funded in over there, and how the police officers are paid who work at Southland, whether they're paid from the general fund or paid from Southland. That's how it came about. It wasn't anything degradating. It was just a matter of trying to gain knowledge.
Yeah, their funds come from the general operations of the city.
Well, we know that it all goes into the general fund, but we were just talking about.
And then we bill Southland, they reimburse, but they don't, do not reimburse the full salary.
Right.
So.
I think you said there's one police officer that's working at Southland who is paid through Southland, one person over there.
There may be, but now, Southland does not fully reimburse the city for the services that are provided, no.
Well, everything is about knowledge is power, and if you don't ask, you won't know, so, you know.
Southland is a fantastic corporate sponsor for our city. Would hate the thought of them leaving and they're not doing as well as they're doing, but they do not reimburse 100%, so.
Thank you for that. That's why it's important to have our police chief and all of our department heads present when we're in our meeting, so they can ask questions if they don't understand, and we can ask them questions if we don't understand. And if we don't understand and they don't understand, we'll bring it back to the municipal council body, and the whole body should get an answer. So we had a really good meeting, and I'm so thankful that our chief and various police officers are coming to the meeting because he's helping us a great deal. And I think that was about the influx of what our meeting was about, the police cars, the radios, protection at the junior high school, and that was it. It was a good meeting. And Chief, of course, we are very proud of Chief Campbell. He said that the 21 officers has been hired within the year and a half that he's been in administration. That's a very good report. That is my.
R.
Department met on September 19th at noon. We currently have one firefighter position that is open. All paramedics are field at this time. The agility test currently is scheduled for September 30th at 9:00 a.m. The council member would like to attend, please. No retirements. The PPEs for 2024 will probably be ordered in about a month, so they'll take a few months to get them in. They are in the process of getting two bids for the ladder truck. Hopefully, we'll have those relatively soon and can present them to the council for consideration. Then we'll have to visit with Ms. Perry administration as to how we're gonna handle the financing on that. Nothing under building maintenance. We have three firefighters in the MT school currently, and two firefighters heading to paramedic school at this time. The three MTs is about a five-week program. The paramedics is about a year-long program. Budget is in line with their current spending at this time. And September 28th at 2:00, Mayor touched on this earlier, the training facility, that should be the official opening day. They've been using the facility, they've been training, but this will be the grand opening. We'd love for everybody to come by if they could. We'll send an email out or text to remind everyone.
September 28th, week from today, 2:00 o'clock.
Budget?
Budget will meet next Thursday. Typically, it's at noon, but depending on your schedule, we can try to be as flexible as possible.
Personnel? No, you said next week.
We've already met.
Chamber and Airport?
The Chamber, the Chamber met on September 13th. The board business included the visit with Representative Ferguson and Senator Ingram. Talked a little bit about upcoming community events, especially the hometown showdown that's gonna be in West Memphis on October 13th. And some of the events coming up, like rhythm and blues, Christmas tree lighting, and Christmas tree parade. Nothing really concrete with those, but if they were discussed initially. That concludes the West Memphis Chamber report. The Airport Commission, Susanna Cook with Garver Engineers, reported that a grant offer has been received from the FFAA for the North Avalon Rehab Apron Project. Before the offer was received, the FFA, I say FFA, the FFAA was able to increase the available funds, and there were some negotiations with the local contractor to increase the scope of the project for the same cost per square yard. The negotiated rate was a little over 4.4 million. Ms. Cook also reported that she has been in contact with Rebel Services. They are the ones that are doing the fuel farm rehab project. And because of the soil testing, they've asked for an additional $11,000 because they've gotta cut three feet deep instead of 18 inches. So that was approved by the commission, and that concludes the Airport Commission report.
All right. Were there any other committees that I may overlook? Hearing none, okay. I had no appointments. I have a few announcements, quite a few announcements. First of all, I wanna say, I wanna commend our demo and grass cutting department. They have done an excellent job. They are doing an excavation project right over there off 25th Street, right behind the school, in between Jackson, Wonder, and Wonder Junior High. All that area, they cleared those areas out where you all are condemning these trailers. And we got builders that's going in to build some affordable housing, which is gonna be good for our community. And they are doing a wonderful job. If you get time, go by there and look at it.
Can we see it?
I did see it, but I wanna ask about all these grassy lots. How are they gonna become, I mean, they're lots that, I mean, grass.
Well, I'm gonna answer that question, and I'm gonna say, like, you know, that's not our responsibility. That's the responsibility of the people who owns those lots. We got so many lots around here that we trying to cut for the city and take care for the city and provide housing, but everyone has, the citizen has to get on board and start to cut their lots. Then we have a whole bunch of lots that are owned by absentee owners, and they're just leaving it for the city. And one of the things that I have just done, I think about two weeks ago, I had to up the fee because some of them saying, well, it's cheaper to let the city, to pay the city $75 to cut their lots. And we not in the lot cutting business, because we ain't got that many people to cut lots. So they need to start taking the role of cutting their own lots, because that's what's important. If they do that, then it's no way that we're gonna have overgrown lots. But I do understand that you have taxpayer citizens who have homes here, and you have someone down the street that has a lot that's grown up, but they must understand, it's not our responsibility. But we will, we will do what we can to help them, but placing all the lots on us every year is impossible. You all will have to give me a half a million dollars, and let me have about 10 other guys to cut all these lots down like that.
So we don't beat it out anymore. City does all the grass cutting.
The city does all the grass cutting for our lots, like the Middle America Park, for the City Hall, for the, everything that we own. That's what we do. And we do try to, and we still, when we had the estimate like last year, I would have to beat it out, but like I said, that money runs out. But what I've been doing this year is cutting the lot and spraying them, and that's been helping some of the lots where they have been growing this quick. But still, it's still the responsibility of the person who owns that property.
Okay, sir, for example, if you have an absentee owner like we were talking about, and we cannot get in touch with that person, so what do we do? We just let that lot grow until the end of the summer, and the fall weather kills the grass?
Well, how we deal with that is that we try to send our people out to cut it. We do try. But like I said, I'm not gonna make that our responsibility, because I keep cutting everybody else's lot, then I can't get there where we supposed to get down to city. So honestly, it's not our responsibility, but we doing what we can, and we spraying, and what we doing, we have been doing, is going out spraying these lots. And actually, lots are much better than they were. Now, they're not as worse as they was. 'Cause I know one's right down the street from your home, I know they may be growing on the outside, but we've been spraying them and keeping them down as much as we can.
They're pretty tall right there.
And it's owned by who?
I really don't know.
And that person that we don't know who need to be taking care of, cutting their yard. Unless we can, through our planning department, and they're not here, and I wish he was here, we can try to start take ownership of it, try to get it into the program where we trying to get builders to come in and be possible and donate those lots and do different things like that. But when people stay there saying that they own their lot, they gonna have to step up and take care of that lot.
Not just in where I am, but as driving, I see it just everywhere. I mean, we're trying to beautify the city, and I know we're, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time, of course, because he's so huge and big, but we want to think about the entire city. And what you're talking about is wonderful, because I have to go that way to and from work. But there are just so many other areas that are just really, really terrible.
Well, actually, that area is not just a. Well, actually, that area is not just to be cutting grass. Now, actually, the reason why I done that is because we got kids that's walking from Jackson Wonder and Wonder Junior High. And at that time, they can walk on the field and you wouldn't even see them. They can be attacked or anything. They're doing that for safety reasons. More than just home development, but luckily we do have a developer that's looking to build on those lots. So that's why that's a focus right now. So a lot of these other lots that got single lots, I mean, we just need the community to help step up, you know, and take care of their lives. I mean, it's no way now, you all, like I said, this council, you all gave me a few more hundred thousand dollars, I can buy a couple more big tractors. I hire a couple more guys and we're trying to get more people cut and spraying, but just needs to help on some of it.
He kept on the screen now. Clean up.
Well, they're doing an excellent job over there.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's no areas like that. I mean, you may have one or two lots in the area, but that was a whole part of our city almost. That was Twenty-Fifth to Broadway, Walker to Broadway, S L Henry, that was a whole block of this.
So who took that property over? Who owns that now?
Well, we own some over through the Public Facilities Board bought some of it. When the school, the school bought some, Public Facilities Board bought some. And we do have some developers, the Dervens, who own some of that property as well. Who's doing the building right now?
And he should make a difference.
See, before then, you couldn't even see that. He just was just lost.
And you know, some guy put on Facebook that I went to him and tried to lowball him for his property. We got so many slaying around here. I ain't went to no one trying to buy nobody property, but you know, there's some things they just say. But we're going, like I said, Ms. Mohammed, to answer your question, we're going to do everything we can to help. I mean, I'm not just going to turn a death dive. We just want the homeowners to do what they can to help us. And or if we can try to take over their property and get it to a developer who want to build on it.
Thinking about ticketing them, giving them tickets or something of that nature for city attorney, how can we, how can we put some fire under them?
And if we don't know who it is, why are we going to ticket?
Well, I mean, if they're absentee property owners, you know, I mean, you can't really write them a ticket because they're not there. You can send out notices in the mail. You can send out certified mail. You can do all that. You can impose liens against their property as long as you can until it becomes such that maybe it is condemnable. But you know, if it's a livable structure, unless it's a health hazard, that's it. It's pretty hard to take people's property away from them because it's a constitutional right. Even if you are a bad property owner, you know, you've got a constitutional right to own that property. I agree with you. I wish people would take more responsibility. It's not just in one part of the city, it's in all parts of the city. I mean, you know, I see around and where I live, there's people who don't cut their yard. It makes you mad when you take care of your own yard that other people won't do it. But as far as these people that are out of town that are absentee property owners, what they're doing is they're buying property at tax sales typically because it doesn't cost very much money for them and then they just don't take care of it. Think they can sell it, you know, and make some money off of it. That's usually how that happens. Or it's property that's been in somebody's family for a really long time. You know, everybody's gone and it's just been left. I mean, typically, those are what I see anyway. So we can do what we can to keep it clean, but it's a lot harder to take it away from them.
And we have some in our land bank, so we see how to go through that process to get some. But it is, we not going to be able to get as much as what's available. But our land bank do, we have about twenty-three properties, I think, right now.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-eight. Mayor, and I'm going to be working on doing some quiet title actions, which will clear the title for people to purchase that property and have clear title after tax sale. So that's something we're working on.
Thank you.
Second, I just wanted to announce that our utility department got their, their fiber command center. You know, we getting ready to start off of broadband internet. Our first customer hopefully going to be coming online pretty soon, tier one. As well as that they have some to bid out for the West Memphis House and the door that would, thanks to you all through the community, the developer block, great money of last year, not this year, but last year. That money has been spent, well, we ran to be spent for them to install the internet in that area. And that's for in case if COVID came back and kids had to be at home or somebody need to do teledoc. Well, yeah, it is back, but you know, but we got to a point where they had to close schools and different things like that. So that would be there and then there would be another income-driven stream for the city as well at a cheaper price. Also, I want to ask you all to please keep Ms. Lola Allenway in your prayers. She lost her granddaughter in the Mary family. So you know, Ms. Lola went through a lot, but then the last year losing her son, father, now her granddaughter. So just definitely keep her in your prayers. Also, you all, some of you all missed the police ceremony, but it was a great ceremony for our police department. So next time, if you can, I really appreciate it if the whole council can attend, if your schedules permit you to. This Saturday, my good friend, Mr. James, for you and creative strategies, we're going to be, we're going to be doing five miles. It may take them about two hours to do it. I'm going to do it in about forty-five minutes. But creative strategies, five K walk and run this Saturday on the twenty-third, starting at nine o'clock, right? Okay, registration open at eight o'clock and the race is going to start at nine fifteen. On time. Now, I need to see you with your running shoes on now.
And it's for prostate awareness.
Prostate awareness, yes, yes, ma'am, definitely. That's very key to me because most of my grandfathers, when they passed, they definitely, one died from prostate cancer and one had it when he passed, so.
Where are you registered? Where is the registration?
Actually, everything on fake place will be at the city center.
Okay, at eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock, registration.
So everyone, everyone going to be there, right? Mr. Murray, I see you still got, you got some running there, you know. Mr. Willis? Mr. Willis? I know you can run, don't you?
I feel a whole lot, a whole lot better running today than I did yesterday.
Okay. But yeah, once again, that's the five K run, creative strategies and the five K walk and run. Now, I'm just seeing this walk part. How that walk part coming there, it was run, but that's a walk now. I'll just play, I'll play. Okay.
Me and, excuse me. Me and, me and Councilman Bruce talked about something. On Jefferson and Winchell. We need a SCACOP now, man. We got two that's not in use right now. One is on Fourteenth and the eight hundred block. And one is on fifteen and the seven hundred.
When you say it's not working, what you mean?
They're not in use really. The school is gone, so they're not.
Oh, okay, okay. You're talking about, yeah.
For the junior high, for the junior high and elementary on Sixteenth, on Fifteen, between sixteen and fifteen.
Okay, well, definitely. Let me, let me give the police.
You know, the little guy, he's a high-traffic area. He needs some attention.
Sure, I will give it to chief and we'll try to get that thing moving.
We have a lot of break-ins over there tonight. A lot of break-ins. Yes.
Okay. Also, Tuesday, September the twenty-sixth at six PM here at City Hall. I'm asking all pastors to come out. I want to talk to them about a few things. Once again, I want to say thank you, Councilman, we're pulling all, we're going to say Councilman. We talked about some things and definitely want to get some of our pastors involved on some things. I really believe if, if our pastor can say that our church that we are going to adopt the street in front of us and the street behind us and and help us, I think that they have not, not just, not just their church, but they have responsibilities as a community. So just try to get the pastors involved. And I know a lot of them have responded and I'm so pleased by that. Matter of fact, one just prayed, so that's definitely going to be good. Also, the Eastern Lane Training Facility is going to open Thursday, September twenty-eighth at two PM. We're going to do a grand opening for that. So I'm asking all of you all to come out that Thursday on the twenty-eighth at two PM. The Eastern Training Facility, it's a great facility. I did it. Some of you all probably can run it through and, and I know Ms. Mohammed probably already done it before though. So, you know, once I scared the fire and going into small areas and different things like that. Yeah, so definitely do that. Families in Transition National Day Remembrance will be this Monday, right here at City Hall at six PM. It's the twenty-fifth, it's this Monday, right here, and we'll be doing a National Day of Remembrance. And what we'll be doing, like I always have tried to say every year, I'm trying to actually put this out of business. And what I mean by put this out of business is that I'm tired of coming and speaking on, I'm honest, young black men losing their lives. It's for everyone, but I mean, I'm going to call it what it is because that's what's happening. We are losing our life over crazy, crazy reasons and gun violence is never good for us. We got to find out a way how we can address this issue without that. First Responders Appreciation Day, per the Delta Plus Youth, is going to be Saturday, September the thirtieth, from twelve PM to three PM. It's right here at City Hall as well. All right. I'm excited about this. Tuesday, October the third is, once again, we bringing the back national nights out. So we want everyone that they want to be involved, they want to go around to different houses. Or if you want to have something, give them Miss Bow at your house and get your neighbors out. Then we can stop by there and I hope you cook us a good food. Just throwing that out, I'm just playing, but definitely we want to, the goal is to meet the neighbors, let them meet us and anything. You meet your neighbors and know who it is. I remember one time when you lived in the house, you knew everyone on the street. But now some people don't know who some people is. So definitely it's a goal to make sure that we get everyone out. Yeah. October the twenty-eighth, we have our homeowners class, and that's something that we talking about back over here, what we getting ready to build, what the developers. Let me say, developers are building low-income homes. Says, well, we got other houses coming up real soon, so it's not just low income. But we just want people to be able to get that information, that knowledge. We're going to have lenders there. We're going to have creditors there that have to be credit, the whole nine yards. So definitely want to get them involved in this, October twenty-eighth from nine to twelve, the same day as the Rhythm and Ribs. And early that, well, starting at twelve to six, October twenty-eighth, the Rhythm and Ribs is going to be at the Civic Center parking lot. So there's a lot of good cooking that's going to go out there and music. So definitely, October twenty-eighth, the Rhythm and Ribs at the Civic Center from twelve PM to six is free. So you know, we had some good competition out there, you know, from Hampton to Carol the Mills and some of the different people that doing some cooking. So we're going to see who's the birthday king or queen. Also, Families in Transition is.
I'm going to cook something you can eat.
I hope it's fish. You know, Mr. Munster was out there last time, but he cheated though, you know what I'm saying? He leave it like that. But Families in Transition, October the twenty-second, from eleven to two, is going to do their Soup Sunday at the Shake Shack. So Councilman Coon has tickets if you want to purchase them. It's a fundraiser for them. They are a great organization that does a lot of great things within our community. So definitely check out that, October the twenty-second. I know it's a lot I'm telling you all, from eleven to two, but it's going to be the Shake Shack. And last, Kingdom Seekers is doing the teenagers. And what teenagers is, is they're going to be honoring their senior citizens on Saturday as well. This Saturday coming up from twelve to two. So I'm actually going to be able to run the five K in about thirty minutes, thirty, forty minutes. And then I'll be able to go home, take a bath and then get down to shake some hands, you know. James will still be walking it, but I give him a ride, so. Just playing, which is, but that's all I had. Anyone else have anything else?
Mayor, could you repeat the one you were saying that you're going to have the ministers? The ministers?
Oh, yeah. Actually, what I'm doing, we having a ministers meeting and definitely I'm trying to get all the ministers within the community because there's so many different things that I feel that our ministers can help us with for adopting the street. And then just like for instance, if your church on the street and the light is out, nine times out of ten, we are not out at nighttime. So if it's out, you can let us know and definitely I can respond back to utility and ward. We get someone out to make sure their lights are running, just different things like that as well as hopefully a minister to your community, you know, just, just.
When is, when is that?
That's going to be September the twenty-sixth at six PM. So definitely just want to, a lot of people listen to their pastors, so definitely be good. Just get, get them involved and get back to the old, the old way of teaching, you know, with the parents and the pastors. So definitely we want to get that done.
Mayor, the ministers meet here.
Yeah, they're all, the ministers are going to all be here at City Hall. And city attorney?
I had intended to have the amended ordinance, to amend the zoning ordinance on the agenda today. But that has to go through the Planning Commission first, so it'll be on the agenda the next time.
All right, and then the last thing, real quick, I know it's last, but I had, did have a meeting with the core engineers. And we talked about some of the things, they've been working on a thirty-year plan. That was before our poppers were born, but actually they're going to start to do some digging in our ten miles, fifteen mile bios. Which hopefully is going to allow the, if the bios is in the B section, which forty feet in the top and it comes down smaller. They want to make it a whole forty feet drop, so what they would do is allow us to attain more water. So hopefully that will help a lot of the flood and it's going to help a lot of that rainwater that come from Marion down on us. So we have some of that water to go through our city and necessarily not just stay on our, in our city. And we're going to use some of our resources to start trying to cut more of the bios to make sure all that thing is clear. So that's how it go. Before we go, you all approve for Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Ricky Rogers, will you come forward real quick? We're going to get five minutes, get your name, your address and address the council, please.
Mayor, City Council meeting, I, first of all, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for taking time out, just hear me out. But a couple of things I'd like to address if possible. First of all, the question, the SCACOPs, who are they available to? It was citizens or just citizen employees?
Uh, Mr. Rogers, I'm Mike Stevenson, city attorney. We get a lot of Freedom of Information requests for the SCACOP footage. I mean, it's for anybody who makes a request that's a citizen of the state of Arkansas. So the problem with the SCACOPs that we run into is some of them aren't functioning at all. The download takes a lot of time because of the equipment. I'm not sure that's what's going to be upgraded. But a lot of times we have people who will make requests for SCACOP footage for a long period of time, like a whole day. Unfortunately, it takes the officer who has to retrieve that information currently. You know, if it's about an hour, it takes him about sometimes twenty-four hours to retrieve it from the computer. So we try to limit people to requesting footage that will take no telling how long to download. And we try to limit it to, you know, an hour period of time so we don't have a police officer who's dedicated to trying to download that for such a long time.
That's definitely understandable. But nevertheless though, and I would have, I'd like to think this is an honest question, but if you needed, it's somebody here in the private sector. Because I request, I, I thought I did the right thing. I requested the footage and I was told that's exactly how you do it. And I was told some lady downtown that you said you can only go back an hour.
Well, that's not right. I don't know who you talk to. I don't know who's downtown. But what I just told you was, I try to limit people to requesting footage for an hour so we don't have one officer dedicated for such a long period of time trying to download it, unfortunately, due to the, you know, how long it takes. But no, it doesn't go back. We, I think it goes back thirty days and then it purges from the system, maybe something like that. It could be sixty, I can't recall, something like that.
Well, she lied on you.
I don't know who you're talking about. And nobody, nobody called me to ask me, and first of all, I'm not the one that makes those decisions. It's the police officers that determine, you know, about that equipment, so.
Well, I certainly understand it, but again, I'd like to request some footage on the third of July. I don't know exactly when it happened, but it had to have been after eight o'clock. But somebody vandalized my car.
Okay, I'm going to stop you just real quick. And I'm going to tell you, probably the third of July is going to be longer ago than, than it's probably that purged out of the system by that time because that's over sixty days if I'm calculating correctly. And I don't think it goes past that period of time. So, you know, I don't remember seeing your request, but we get so many that I can't memorize all of them. Typically, my assistant is very good at handling those. But we can only provide you what we get from the police department and what comes from the SCACOP. If it's down, we can't provide you anything. If it's, if it's. If it's, if it's, uh, past the period of time of your request where it's purged, we can't provide you with anything.
Well, you, again, the ball was dropped on that, but, uh, it works because I've, several times, I myself have powerful footage, and the first time, it was down, and it came out and fixed it. But that's, that's fine and well. But moving on, how, uh, I got one question about disturbing the peace. This Sunday, uh, we had a lot, because I, I stay on Thirty-first Street in the project. Man, my, there was, there was so many people out there, and they had like a five-foot-tall speaker out. And I had just got out of church, and it, it was, it was really cranked up loud. I called the police department five times. Uh, I was told that there, there was nothing they can do about that because it wasn't after ten o'clock. I know that to be a lie because this is disturbing the peace. As a matter of fact, I even went down there myself, and I was told by dispatch that they were doing other job. But when I got there, I see five or six police sitting outside talking. But nevertheless, sir, uh, here's what happened. After the fifth time, and, and, and I'm trying, trying to be anonymous. After the fifth time, I hear a knock at my door. The police is at my door knocking while all this, this school block is going on. Actually, now, now he put, my very system could be at jeopardy right now. I don't think it was right. Uh, he said something to the fact that, uh, the call pinged from my apartment, which it did, I called, but no, I, I didn't want, do y'all understand what I'm saying? I didn't want him to come to my home. I mean, these young people doing some real crazy things. At this present time, I don't even know whether my life is at stake because they came, they're right beside my building, and when the police came knocking at the door, everybody huddled around my door. And that wasn't right. I didn't, to stay anonymous, we do that for a reason. To assure that nobody know who's calling, uh, no harm gonna come to us and our property. But that wasn't right, and I, I went down and talked to the police department, and the best they could tell me is that, uh, I'm gonna talk to them. But that's not good enough, I mean, because I could be dead of my property hurting. And, and, and I do, I do get emotional, but I just share some light on that. Was it, was it wrong?
Well, actually, what I would do, who, um, do you know who you talked to?
Uh, uh, okay, uh, when I went there, you see, I had to go to change command. It was like, I, I wanted to speak to the chief. I had to go through the change command. Uh, the, uh, no, I don't, but they know me, they know me. But now, that was wrong.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, I wanna be able to help you in this situation, so I need to know who you talk to.
Well, it, it, uh, I had that black guy there that was in charge, and, and, and the bald-headed white guy. I don't know, I don't, I don't know the name, but I was so pissed off.
Well, I mean, he, he could, I mean, if, if he talked to the chief, definitely I could talk to the chief or, uh, the assistant chief. So definitely, I can get someone that he may have talked to that let him know what the issue on that. And what do you say you live at again?
Uh, two nine seven South Thirty-first Street, apartment fifty-six.
So you live in the House and Authority?
Yes, I do.
Uh, you spoke with the House and Authority about the loud music?
I, I have, but they turn, they run me back and forth. That's their job, that's just yours. And, 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 and I'm, I'm, this is all I'm getting. And another thing, is it because of St. Andrew Project, the reason that, that I can't get service from the city?
Well, let me, let me, let me answer you that. I'm gonna emphatically say, no, because you looking to your mayor. I come from that same project. So I, it, it ain't that, so it's mayor, and I'm the top official when it comes to, uh, our city employers. I am the man. I come from that area, and that's why we doing so much work in there. So don't, don't think that. What I wanna do is just try to get you some, uh, solutions to your issues, so.
And let me say this, though, man, I, I left here nineteen seventy, nineteen ninety-seven, and y'all doing tremendous job.
Thank you.
And, 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 and this is on it. I've seen the changes that, that you guys is making, and you doing, but there's little kinks everywhere, but this particular, this deep area, the police not working for me.
Well, definitely, uh, I would give, I would give it to chief, uh, give your, your information to Ms. Lane, and then we'll follow back up with you to give you some type of resolution of what happened and try to do what serves you as the best that we can.
Okay, well, well, thank you so much. Now, thank you. Take each and every last one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Were there anything, any other comments?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I get a second? All right, everybody, a vote. Also, the forty-nine is gonna kill the...